Just continued really strong sales of properties up there. So as those properties turn over, this city is reaping the benefit from additional property tax. And also, while in development, we're also seeing permit revenue, plan check revenue from Metro Heights flow into the city. Now, obviously, once that development is finished, that revenue will taper off. But again, you know, it's nice to have that kind of ongoing revenue at this point due to that development. As you can see, license and permits is up almost a million dollars for two reasons, really. Metro Heights development, but also the more favorable agreement we have with our plan check consultant that returns more money back to the city for plan checks versus the old agreement we had in place. And then charges for services, really fire plan checks contributing to that area. And again, mostly from Montebello Hills. But again, when I return for second quarter budget update, I'll have some more information on how the updated fee schedule is positively impacting those two areas of revenue. And then transfers in up a million seven five. Transit fund has transferred in some measure A funds to the general fund. One-time revenue, but again, a nice positive inflow of revenue. So the sales tax focus, for now, leaving the 1% and the measure H projections flat. We are seeing additional revenue from the Monterey Park Marketplace, the sharing tax year agreement we have with that property, additional $100,000. And again, as more of sales tax data rolls in, these will be updated. But for now, you'll see a nice projection of 17 million in the 1%, which is up 1.3 million from what we actually received last year. So a lot of additional retail activity. I think, you know, we have a couple of large retailers in town and really helping to pull that revenue trend upwards. And measure H just continues to respond very well. So on the other side of the ledger, general fund expenditures, you'll see over the last 10 years, almost, a steady upward trend. And again, as the city invests more in our human capital and our infrastructure and our services, obviously, things cost more. But I think the residents can attest to that investment, whether it's police services or fire or the community service events, you know, you can really see that investment in the city of Montebello. And again, no surprise for a full-service city like Montebello, police and fire are the majority of general fund expenditures. Public works, that's non-CIP programs, that's street maintenance, facility maintenance, park maintenance, and then the other functions that round out the city's general fund. So on the expenditure side, an adopted budget this year of 83.55 million. There's an amended budget of about 84.8 million, and our first quarter projection is at 87.8 million. So let me kind of get into the details there. So the amended budget, 84.8 million. There's been, since the budget was adopted, there's been 1.26 million in budget amendments. The majority of that, 931,000, is when we've carried over purchase orders from the prior year. A lot of time, departments will start work, start projects, will start to purchase items that aren't completed by June 30th. So we roll those purchase overs into the new year, it amends the budget, those projects, those purchases are completed, and it hits this new fiscal year. And then there's been a few budget amendments approved by the city council for 330,000 in the last few months. Fire department doing a strategic plan, they hired a consultant to do that, that's 75,000. Some much-needed vehicles, three new vehicles for fire and related equipment. And then the citywide custodial contract, there was an adjustment there recently, 150,000 for public works. So in general, as kind of mentioned earlier, the majority of those increases you're seeing from the adopted budget to the projection has to do with the seven MOUs that were approved between June and August. We now have three months' worth of salary and benefits data that we can see those salary increases. And again, not just base wages, it hits overtime, special pays, PERS. And, you know, given the size of the departments, largest impact is police and fire is where we're seeing these impacts. But again, we're still looking at a surplus by the end of 25, 26. And then minimum wage continues to go up. The majority of the work done by Parks and Rec is done by our part-timers, and so we see increased part-time wages. But again, minimum wage is going up. There was a recent updating of salaries across the board to make us more competitive in part-time wages. So that's where we're seeing a lot of the increases. And so for our hotels, looking at year-end results, by the time, at the time of preparing this report, I did not have the first quarter results available. But by the time I do the second quarter report, I'll have both first and second quarter report. Good news, Hilton Garden Inn ended last year with a $1.24 million surplus. Home Two Suites with a $638,000 surplus. So, you know, some good, strong performance from our hotels. Hilton Garden Inn occupancy continues to remain healthy. Operating surplus, as I mentioned, 1.2 million. Occupancy rate is actually up almost 10% versus the same period last year. So that proves strong. And the average daily rate, again, what an average daily room rate is, is up slightly over last year. So some good trends there. And then on the Home Two Suites, $639,000 surplus. Occupancy and average daily rate remain strong. Again, occupancy rate pushing 90% to 89%, which is an increase from last year. And the average daily rate is actually up from last year. And that is my report, and thank you. And if there are questions, thank you very much.
Thank you for the report. I'll look to see if any of my colleagues have any questions, comments on this presentation.
I do, yes. Thank you. There's an echo. Oops. It's great to see the trends going up. I think for the most part, Montebello is doing very well financially. I'll ask a quick question. Can you explain again on the hotel operations, the Home Two Suites, from the 4.1 million that it goes down to like a million?
Yes, let me. Let me just look at that. You're asking about the Home Two Suites?
Yes, the Home Two Suites, the revenue expenditures for 2022, '23 was 4.1 million. And then in '23, '24, it falls down to like a million.
Yes. So one of the trends I've been noticing with the hotels is on the labor side and the food and beverage costs. Home Two Suites is a larger operation than Hilton Garden is. They have more staff, they'll have more food and beverage costs. And there's been a large increase in both of those categories. Even with the same level of staffing, again, minimum, increase in minimum wage is impacting everybody, so that's going to, that's obviously going to impact. But I've also seen a really large jump from 600,000 to 900,000 for food and beverage costs. So that's a, plays a large part in seeing that surplus from 4.1 million to, you know, 971 to 638. Also, I would wager that as the occupancy rate increases, they are also staffing it at a higher level. So you combine additional staff with higher base wages, you're going to have greater expenses in those areas, it's going to eat into the surplus.
So the projected number is even lower, right, at the 638? So the trend will...
Yes. Now, the adopted budget showed about a $250,000 surplus for the Home Two Suites. Based on where we ended last year, I'm more confident that it will be a larger surplus than what the budget, adopted budget was.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. That concludes my questions.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay, just want to thank you for the report. Just one question here. A few weeks back, I was in a roundtable with the lieutenant governor, and it was different elected officials, and there were some city managers also in that meeting. And there was a neighboring city that had reported some sales tax losses based on the ICE rates that took place earlier in the year. And I just wanted to see if there's any, it kind of seems like here, we haven't really been, there was really no impact on the, on the sales tax or on folks going to the stores. Just, you know, she was trying to see, you know, kind of gather data from local municipalities to see what impact, if any, is having on some of our revenue streams. So just wanted to see if there was any trends that we saw or anything that you can speak of.
Absolutely. So the way sales tax reporting works is there's a significant lag between when our consultants get the data and report it to us. So these projections right now are based on January, February, March results. So the mid-year update, which will have April, May, and June, okay, June kind of being the height of what we saw with some of the ICE raids, that this next sales tax update that will be received in the next month or so is going to be crucial in showing whether or not that the current trend holds. Hence why I felt, I didn't want to increase our 1% or our measure H above budget at this point, given that there are some unknowns. And some of the early studies I've heard from LA EDC and other groups, there is a ginormous economic impact to those ICE raids. And I don't doubt that it'll impact us somewhat. To what extent, I'm not sure at this point. But by the second quarter budget report, I will have some more relevant sales tax data which would account for some of the ICE raid impact.
And I think just to, and the numbers that the cities were sharing was somewhere around 250, $400,000 in sales tax revenue that was lost during these, during the ICE raids. I would also, and, you know, try to see if we can gather data and also our, and any activity on any of our departments, whether it was law enforcement or our bus lines, anything like that, to see also to quantify whether they were also impacted. So it's not just necessarily the sales tax, but any other department that might have been impacted. Because I know during that time, during the peak of it, there might have been more, there were some protests, there were some, you know, other stuff going on, and I know it put a strain on our law enforcement. So just kind of gathering that data and seeing, you know, just seeing the data, and I think that would be, you know, helpful for us.
Yes, Mayor, I think finance can definitely work in on that. Anecdotally speaking, as you know, during the ICE raids, a significant amount of resources were spent with our law enforcement, our public work closures, and even throughout various departments and staff actually doing outreach and educating our business community and other folks. So yes, there was a significant amount of resources that were expended, and we're happy to quantify that in the future. Thank you.
Okay. So again, I know this is receivable file, so we, no motion, I believe, is required for this. So we'll go ahead and, or did you add, sorry, Mr. Soriano?
Actually, there is a motion required for the salary schedule with the rescission noted by the city manager.
Got it. Okay, so for that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I second.
We have a second by Mayor Protem. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, that item carries. We'll move on to item number nine, amend the fiscal year 25, '26 Transit Capital Improvement Program for various projects. And we do have a presentation by Director of Transportation, John Soriano.
Good evening, Mayor Melendez and honorable members of the city council. The item before you for consideration this evening is to appropriate carryover funds for various projects that are related to transit, to the Transit's Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2025, 2026. As you know, the city's transportation department operates Montebello Bus Lines to provide public transit services to Montebello and the surrounding communities. What makes the transportation department unique from the other city departments is that we do not operate off of the general fund. Instead, we operate off what's called a enterprise fund. And this enterprise fund provides funding for our nearly $40 million adopted operating budget, helps to employ a workforce of 200 employees. But it also provides, when cobbled together with federal, state, and local funding, it helps to fund Montebello's CIP with a current total program value of more than 14.18 million. And so MBL's Capital Improvement Program is the multi-year scheduling of capital projects, which is based on available fiscal resources and our leadership's direction for specific improvements. Our projects this evening, as you'll see, are categorized into four different groups with goals specific to modernization, sustainability, safety, and passenger experience. So group one, this speaks to our fare collection and technology systems. The goal for this first group here is to modernize Montebello Bus Lines fare technology and IT infrastructure and improving our efficiency and accountability. So the first project here we have is our fare box system. What we're looking to do is to move towards a universal fare. And so currently and in times past, we only accepted two types of payment, one which was cash and the second which was a tap card. But as we begin to move towards the World Cup in 2026 and the LA Olympics in 2028, what we want to do is bring our fare box system current where we're able to receive additional fares. This will enable us, enable us to not only receive those two types of payment, but also credit card payment, debit cards, Apple Pay and Google Pay as well. It's important to note that our fare box system, when you look at Montebello Bus Lines, we service disadvantaged communities. And so there has been a push in other transit agencies for us to do away with cash, but we've been very adamant because we understand that we do have a demographic within our community that is on a cash-only system. So we've been very intentional in ensuring that cash remains one of our, one of our ways of receiving payment. So that will continue to be included in the universal fare. And so this is, these are the dollar amounts that are currently being rolled over into the new fiscal year for this particular project. The second project we have here is our Facility Surveillance and IT Upgrade Project. This project is currently underway. It includes the entire transportation facility, which includes our facility on the west end of the property, and also includes our public works and our ELC facility off of the Greenwood Avenue side of the transportation facility. In addition to this, it also includes the MetroLink station over off Lotilla. So this will provide greater security and safety for all of our patrons within our transportation system. Third on our list here is our Asset Management System. We're getting close to implementation here. Our team is currently working through gathering all the different components as it relates to our assets specific to our transit buses. So we currently run 40-foot compressed natural gas buses. And so everything that encompasses the repair and the maintenance of those buses, those assets will be managed through this particular system and the upgrade of this system. Next slide, please. Group two is Maintenance and Facilities. Our goal here is to extend the useful asset life, maintain facilities, and support long-term fleet reliability. So one of the, one of the areas that helps us maintain service is our preventive maintenance. So these dollars have been allocated to ensure that when our buses, when they reach 6,000 miles, our buses get pulled in, preventive maintenance is conducted on these buses to ensure that they maintain their useful life and minimize any kind of breakdowns while in service. Our second line item here, again, is preventive maintenance, but this is actually specific to our facility, in particular, our administrative building, maintenance and equipment. And again, we have some dollars that have been allocated to the upkeep and the maintenance of our facility. Next slide. Group three, Clean Fuel and Fleet Upgrades. Our goal here is fleet sustainability, which is our transition to zero emission technology and the upgrade of alternative fuel infrastructure. In 2020, California Air Resource Board put out an ICT guideline mandate which required all transit agencies to move to alternative zero emission fuel by 2040. And so we've been actively pursuing this transition. Just recently, the city council approved our transition, our zero emissions transition plan that was specific to our fleet as well as to our facility. And what we have here is we have some dollars from the Clean Fuel Measure R specific to capital projects, again, associated with capital maintenance, associated capital maintenance. So this helps us with our transition to zero emission technology. We are, we're currently awaiting the receipt of three of our hydrogen fuel cell electric buses. They're currently sitting in Alabama, waiting for final inspection. And then these dollars have been allocated to that purchase. So once we receive those three buses, those buses will be inspected on site, and then payment will be provided. The benefit here is the state of California also provides some rebate incentives. So we've also applied for those incentives. So we will be looking at recovering potentially a quarter of a million dollars per bus, which will then be able to go into additional hydrogen fuel cell purchases in the future. Forgive me, my allergies are taking advantage of me this evening.
Your voice went out as the price went up.
We're also in the process of procuring our temporary hydrogen fueling station. We do currently have approximately 4.5 million that have been allocated to this project. And that project will actually be coming to the city council possibly in November for contract award. So in alignment with the zero emission technology and alternative fuel infrastructure, we are looking to purchase some additional compressed natural gas buses, which will help us maintain our fleet and our service as we move towards 2040. So again, we have 1.6 million allocated there, and then some additional dollars to replace our aging 40-foot CNG buses, coming to a total cost of 639,000 in additional funding. Next slide, please. Group four, Passenger Experience and Safety. Our goal here is to enhance passenger experience, accessibility, security through surveillance, and improve the bus stop amenities. We have these dollars, this has been an ongoing project since about 2021, '22. So we do have some dollars that we're still currently expending, specific to the bus surveillance system project, bus security equipment. And then just recently, we held some 2-2-1 meetings with our city council related to our bus stop improvement project. Once we get some consensus on some final designs, again, that project will be coming for consideration to release an RFP to improve our bus stop, to improve our bus stop amenities. And those are our projects here for our CIP. Happy to answer any questions or address any comments this evening. Thank you.
Just thank you, John, for powering through that, okay? Appreciate it, man.
Director, you have so many projects here that you ran out of your voice right now. I'll look to see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments.
Yes, I have a quick question. It was kind of related, but maybe not so much. I was just curious about patients that are leaving the hospital, if there's some type of voucher or something that's available to them for when they take the bus line home, because sometimes they don't have anyone to come pick them up. Is there some type of...
So in times past, we have issued tokens. So we still do have tokens available at Montebello Bus Lines when there's certain needs that need to be met and folks don't have other resources for that.
Okay, yeah, that was basically my only question.
Councilmember, also, I think what probably would, might be a better option, our Dolarite service that we provide. So, and I would need to double-check, but especially for the hospitals in the city, in certain situations, they know that they need to call the Dolarite service for those patients and then, but if you have any specific circumstances of folks that are running into that issue, please let us know. We have a specific service that will pick them up and drop them off on certain situations, okay?
Okay, good. Great, thank you.
And just to close it here, thank you, Director Soriano, for your presentation. We're looking forward to all these projects. We know that it's going to be helpful to the modernization and also the passenger experience and the safety of our bus line. So again, thank you for all of your work in this. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I motion to approve.
I second.
We have a first by Mayor Protem Tamayo, and then we have a second by Councilmember Alonso. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
And Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, that carries us on to the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have the consent calendar, items number 10 through 20. Any of these items that wish to be pulled by any member of the city council may be done currently. Let me poll the council. And let me start with Councilmember Alonso. Do you have any items, items 10 through 20?
No items.
Thank you. Councilmember Romero?
Item number 13, please.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Tamayo?
No items.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralta?
Item 11.
Item 11. And Mayor Melendez?
No items.
At this time, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion, oh, let me inquire, was there any public comment cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No.
At this time, then, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve items 10 through 20, with the exception of item number 11. Oh, and who's the other? 13? 13, sorry, 13.
I motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I second.
We have a second by Councilmember Romero. If I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to item number 11 that was pulled by Councilmember Peralta.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did just want to speak on this item. I also, I wanted to just make a request if possible. I believe I understand that tree people at some point will be coming back to make a presentation specifically if we approve today their contract to produce an urban forestry management plan. First of all, I do just want to say I'm very excited that we are considering tree people for this contract. They're the ones that helped us in terms of the partnership to apply for this Cal grant. But one thing that I did want to have for consideration in the development of their, of the urban forestry management plan, they do have outlined community outreach opportunities. Two things, one is if the survey that they develop, if they can actually also make it, make an online accessible version, I think being able to reach folks online is going to be important, so we don't leave people out that can't necessarily attend in person. And then secondly, just want to ensure that we prioritize when it comes to the actual workshops where we will be having to ensure that our community's voice really accurately captures the need of where these trees should be planted, that we are equitable in where we host these workshops. I think that's something that we've been very successful these past few, past few months and this past year in terms of ensuring that we have community workshops in the south as well as the northwest and east side of Montebello. And so just wanted to prioritize that around community engagement. And then also just do want to thank tree people. that around community engagement. And then also just do want to thank tree people beyond the 500 trees that we have to plant as part of this, as part of this grant. I believe I read that they will be donating 250 more trees, specifically fruit trees, for people to take home and plant privately. And so again, that's a really big win to have about 750 trees being planted in the future for our city. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, city manager?
Yes, Caesar, unless you want to touch on it, I'm happy to do so. Regarding the online accessible survey, that's, that we're happy to require that as part of the, the award. And then also, yeah, equity in terms of outreach, it's something that's been at the forefront, I think, at every, every level that we do, including our budget process, our projects. So, so yeah, that's something that, as part of the, the planning process in terms of the community meetings, that we'll make note and will require from them and make sure that we have an equitable distribution in terms of the community outreach that we do. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions or would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item?
I motion. I second.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Peralta and a second by Councilmember Alonso. If I can please have a roll call?
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, that item carries, and we'll move on to item number 13 that was pulled by Councilmember Romero.
Yes, I just wanted to speak on the project and just say how I'm so excited that the south side is getting so much due attention. They're, they're all, you know, all these small things that we're doing in the south, they add up. And these have been long overdue things that, that have been needed. Something just as small as touching up the restroom. But I think it really changes how the residents feel about the south side and having pride in our parks. And, and letting, and it even gives security to let other people know like, hey, we're here, we're taking care of our parks, we see you, and you guys aren't being ignored. So I'm just really excited about all the things that are happening on the south side, and I hope they continue. And small wins each time, and we're just going to continue to give the south side some attention, and I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item?
I motion to approve.
We have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I second.
We have a second by Councilmember Romero. If I can please have a roll call?
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. All right, that concludes our consent calendar. I'll look to see if my colleagues have anything to report for AB 1234 travel reports. Okay, seeing none. This brings us to the conclusion of our meeting, 3:58, and this meeting is concluded. Thank you all for that joined us here, and thank you all for that joined us online. Have a great evening.